All right, calling to order, the December 2nd East Dundee Regular Village Board Meeting. It is 6:01. Kathryn, will you take the role?
Trustee Mahoney.
Here.
Trustee Kuntz.
President.
Trustee Britton.
Here.
Trustee Saviano.
Here.
Trustee Tribber will not be here. Trustee Soder.
Here.
And President Lyman will not be here.
If everybody will rise for the judicial judge. Judicial Judge.
The United States of America and to republic for which it stands, one nation on our ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Ready then? Is anyone here for public comment? Or do we need to?
We're going to have a motion to see you first.
Okay.
Can I have a motion for trustee Mahoney to serve as pro temp for this meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Kuntz.
Yes.
Trustee Britton.
Yes.
Trustee Saviano.
Yes.
Trustee Soder.
Yes.
And trustee Mahoney.
Okay. All right. Good?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Do we have anyone from the audience that'd like to address the board for public comment on anything on the agenda or off the agenda? Just go ahead and state your name and your address.
Connor Harmon. I work for Timber Hill Group and were the applicants for items 7A through 7C. I understand there might not be discussion on those items, but I'd like to respectfully request permission to speak on item 7C.
Could you say your name again for the record?
Connor Harmon.
No problem.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All righty, then I will open it up for a motion for the consent agenda.
I will move to approve the consent agenda, items A through H as written in the agenda.
Second. I second it.
All good?
Yeah. Do we have any comments? Any concerns on anything? Okay.
Trustee Saviano.
Yes.
Trustee Soder.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Kuntz.
Yes.
And trustee Britton.
Yes.
All right, then moving on to other agenda items. Item A, take a motion.
I'll move to approve an ordinance granting a special use permit for a 24-hour vehicle parking and storage facility at 900 Christina Drive, East Dundee.
Second.
All right. Can I ask a quick question about this? Are we taking these issues one at a time for this?
Well.
I mean per the agenda, right?
I mean, do you want, did you make the motion?
I did.
Then yes.
Okay.
I think it might be difficult to take them individually without a totality discussion.
Yeah, like an overall.
So, the applicant is here and we can give an overview.
Okay.
So on the agenda are three separate items. The first one is the special use permit allowing for the vehicle parking. The second is the variations, which did go to PZHC as well as the first item. And then the variations are just for the landscaping, screening, and driveway width. And then the last one is a waiver for the resurfacing or surfacing of the lot itself. So, big picture, the applicant is wanting to create a vehicle parking business at this location. We have several of these businesses in the community, all with different levels of compliance with certain aspects of these variations that are being requested, and also different rules around their special use permits. So, we've had these conversations in the past about how to get to a different place from where we started. When this started in 20, early 2000s, mid 2000s, there was not the ecosystem that there is today. And it's a process to try to incentivize people to do what we would like them to do, but also not disincentivize investment in the community and also put a business at a competitive disadvantage to what's already existing. So, I'm not telling you anything you don't already know. We know some businesses have what this business is asking for, and for longer. But several of the questions before us tonight will be what makes sense going forward trying to get to that place we want to get to and not settle for where we were before. So with that, if you want to start.
Have discussion first or let the applicant speak first? It's up to you.
Yeah.
Do you guys want a presentation or just a quick overview from the petitioner?
Yeah.
The floor is yours.
Sorry to bring you up two whole items early.
You have it loaded up here? Good. Thank you, board, for having us tonight. Again, my name is Connor Harmon, Associate Director of Development for Timber Hill Group, and we're the contract buyer of 900 Christina Drive. For a brief introduction on our business and what we do, we're a best-in-class developer and operator of industrial outdoor storage around the country. And the same presentation was at Plan Commission, but I've included some slides of other facilities that we built around the country. First, one of our big target markets is Jacksonville. We have a 20-acre site there. It's a build-to-suit for Norfolk Southern, fully lit, gated, and fencing with barbed wire. But that's a fully compacted limestone gravel yard. Additionally, we have 53-acre yard in Memphis, Tennessee. This was existing already, but we put about $1.5 million into right-of-way improvements and a front access gate for better access and security. We've also, we're under construction in South Florida on a 60-acre yard that has just over 1,600 parking stalls for trucks and trailers. And we're also planning another facility in Fort Worth, Texas that's just over 700 stalls. And that's 50 acres. But all of these are well-maintained, and we like to be good neighbors and good corporate citizens and address any violations or any outstanding issues that any municipality or county has. So the proposed improvements, kind of unrelated to the zoning requests, but I'll get into those in the next slide. This is the site plan that we had prepared for the site. It more or less is the same except for some interior fencing that we propose. And this could change depending on the tenant base that we tracked. It could be several tenants or just one larger tenant. But we intend to remodel the office building to create a trucker's lounge that would allow for couch kitchenette area. No shower, there would be showers, but no hotel room or beds or anything like that. We're also requesting that variance to the south, which is to widen the driveway from 24 feet to 30 feet. And this is based on the site plan. We're sectioning off the site and to get to that farthest lot to the west would allow, we would need a southern drive aisle there to make it to that spot. And then obviously, we have the northern drive aisle already at that access point. Again, we would potentially add interior fencing based on the tenant base, and we do agree with and would comply with all of the requirements in the special use, including installation of a security camera system. So the entitlement request, as you guys know, is for a special use for a 24-hour operation as well as the associated conditions. And then two variances for driveway width and screening related landscaping. And then there's a waiver request for 10-year pavement, a waiver for pavement. That was, I guess I'll get, I can get into one of the reasons why I wanted to speak on that. But we understand and we want to abide by the villagers' desires to bring the site into zoning conformance in the future. With respect to that 10-year pavement waiver, we do have a couple of concerns as a contract buyer. We have seen most users and operators around the country prefer asphalt millings, gravel, or other native milling surfaces as opposed to paved surfaces. And this is due to the rent that these fleet and trucking operators allocate to in their business and operation. Further, should we land a long-term site user, which is common with these assets, and that's something that we would want, paving the site while the tenant operates presents a challenge for us as we would negotiate leases if that 10-year pavement waiver is approved. As it relates to the Christina corridor, a majority of these sites aren't paved. I know the intention of the village is to pave those at some point in the future. The adjacent PAL properties were granted at PUD, as you guys all know, until 2052 with those waivers. And per the Plan Commission meeting, it's their intention to develop that into a higher and greater use one day. To reiterate, we do want to bring the site into zoning conformance and be a good corporate citizen, but we'd like to request that same 30-year pavement waiver that they were granted with the intention to pave the lot as the corridor is developed. I think it's all worth mentioning the subject property is tucked well within Christina Drive, and the front area of the site is only visible from Christina, and there is no visibility from any major corridor. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I know I went in a couple of different paths there. Thank you.
I guess I would say, I mean, you, I guess, I guess I would say that, you know, the paving is one thing, and I guess I do understand to some extent the advantages of not paving beyond the cost, you know, maybe it's not a continuous non-permal surface for miles and miles. But more concerned to me is we have, you know, we've been collecting these parking lots for these trucking operations, and what it does is it taxes our police department. We get calls to solve disputes and things like that. And so I'm more concerned with the idea of, you know, the avoidance of using the fencing or the blocking off, or what kind of security are you guys proposing?
Yeah, the existing lighting, as it stands today, lights up the entire yard. I think that's one good mechanism for security. We plan to install a security system around the site. We'll likely have onsite security that's manned 24/7.
You'd likely have onsite security 24/7, or you are going to have security onsite 24/7.
If a tenant, if it's a one-tenant user, then we would leave it up to however they wanted to police the site ideally, but if that was a.
What do you mean by one-tenant user?
They're not going to be running it, is the assumption I'm getting.
Right. Yeah. So they, their operations, they would move everything onsite. It could be to one tenant, it could be to like two to three tenants that take portions of the yard, or it could be we operate it as a managed truck parking concept.
So what you're, let me understand that. So what you're saying is you're not going to list this on a site for just anybody to come and park there. You're looking to work with the company that wants to use it for long-term storage for their?
That would, that would be our preference. We would want the ability to be flexible with the amount of uses that we could have on that site. But our idea is to lease it to one user would be great.
Which is what it is now, or was.
Right. So, there's a considerable amount of infrastructure already there, thanks to Enterprise. So, you're asking for all these waivers and the special use. What kind of investment, dollar-wise, do you see putting into this property for sure?
Yeah.
You know, as you start out?
Yep.
What's, what's your bill on, on something that, like that? And how does it all add up based on the different features that you're talking about?
It's in the, I would say it's between one and a half to $2 million, just right off the bat to improve the building. We need to retrofit some of the doors, the maintenance doors. They only allow for autos to get in there, but we'd want to retrofit that to trucks. And then rehabbing and remodeling the office space as well.
And to the lounges and the showers and the.
And then there were a couple fire-related comments that we would also abide by as well related to a looped system or just better access to get to the existing hydrants onsite.
So right now, so you're talking about investing one and a half million, and that's into the new fencing and creating the wider.
Yep.
Drive aisles. How many actual entrances, entrance slash exit, do you, are there onto the property? Right now, there's one, I believe, off of Christina?
Correct.
And then you're proposing adding a second one on the southern, on the south?
The northern access is for their rental vehicles. There's a separate access already for autos for the employee parking, and that's at 24 feet in width. So we would, that's part of the variance request is to widen that.
Which makes sense, since you're moving into trucks. So, the other thing, I notice you, on your map, you've got a fueling station there that was, again, TBD is the intent, to have that as a functioning fueling station where you're selling, or is that something that is just there, you're not going to be implementing it, and you're going to be encouraging them to use the other speedway or whatever that's in there?
Yeah, we would keep that for now. I think if, again, if we got a one-tenant user that didn't want it, we would want to remove that. But it's tough to say exactly right now.
You don't know what the future holds. Okay.
And what is it about the screening and landscaping that you don't like?
We think that the existing fencing that there is now is a good security feature. And there's an access road there to the west that's an additional 20 feet. That's not on our property. And then there's roughly 25 feet until the parking lot for our property. So we feel that that's, at least on the petitioner's side, sufficient amount of buffer space between where trucks would park and the neighboring property.
And I'll just add that some of the property to the west is zoned R1, and so there's different regulations because it's supposedly a budding residential, but actually, that property just needs to be rezoned at some point.
Exactly.
And so it's, like, I've seen the landscaping, it's pretty sufficient.
What is, what is to the west? It's not that big pond, is it not? That's just a big field?
Just a raw land.
It's actually, yeah, it's north and west. There's the cemetery, and then there's the empty parcel that.
So the cemetery is right along here?
Cemetery will be right here, wouldn't it?
Oh, yeah, this is like residential over here, isn't it?
Yeah.
To the north is the detention pond for Lumbow property.
Yeah, but directly to the west is residential.
But to the north, that will be residential. I think it was mentioned on the north end of that lake, there'll be residences eventually.
Yeah.
So this will be the backdrop. You'll see the reflection of this in the water, whatever is there. So it does seem like that side, it would be beneficial to have some kind of screening. I haven't been back there to see the view from there, but.
The west and the north side.
Yeah, the north side where the lake is.
Where the lake is, and then the west side is also R1.
And that could turn into something residential. I mean, it looks like it's just vacant right now, but.
Otherwise, it'd become, have to become M1 or.
The cemetery is.
Sorry.
This is all cemetery.
Yeah, and the landscaping, it's like the north and the west, I feel like I'd like to keep those, just what our standard ordinance is. But against manufacturing, I think that's fine that it isn't. But I think it was brought up in the planning and zoning that the width of the driveway is just more of a residential code that we have, and that it doesn't really, our ordinance doesn't have leeway for manufacturing being bigger for big trucks. So I feel like we should just update our ordinance to reflect in the manufacturing district to have a wider.
Yeah.
So I'm not, I have no problem with.
It's almost like it should be less than.
Yeah, it just seems like a problem with our code there.
Yeah.
And on gravel, since, since we want to balance being competitive with, you know, passports of promised gravel till, for a while, and we've extended it to a small portion to 2050, I think that the first portion is an eternal gravel permission, right? And then the one that's additional is to 2052 or whatever. But I wonder if we've looked into what is the best practice for gravel, like, there are some benefits to gravel where the runoff, especially right next to a lake, you don't want to have runoff going into the lake or anywhere real. But there's underlayments you could put underneath gravel to filter out fuel and oils. So I wonder if we, since we're stuck with, we have a lot of gravel, like, creating an option for best-practice gravel, maybe underlayments so that there isn't pollution going into the groundwater that goes into the lake. But maybe taking the benefits of the environmental, less heating radiating from the black top and less water runoff. So there's some benefits, so maybe giving the option to developers, but maybe phasing that into pavement in 2050. And maybe in the interim, we test out, you know, what could we do to make a gravel option that maintains the best quality we can for a bunch of gravel lots? That's just one idea to throw out.
It's not a bad idea. I'm just, I'm, I guess I struggle with, like, we've got new truck parking going in West Dundee and Hoffman, and I think both are paved. And.
They're requiring them.
They're requiring paved. And so I, I don't know if it was nice gravel with a purpose, it's one thing, you know, but the original, the original intent was, there was nothing here.
Right.
Right? This was absolutely nothing. And now it's not. So continuing to apply the original standards feels outdated.
Right.
Because we gave the, we gave a lot of that to developers who were trying to make something from nothing. So I don't know. I don't know. I do like, you know, the concept of asphalt with a, or gravel with a purpose, you know, makes a lot more sense than just always gravel and always dusty and always gravel on second two because the trucks are pulling it out with them and damage to roads and things like that.
Yeah, and the dust seems like one of the downsides. I think it was mentioned in the planning and zoning meeting that there's no dust issues, but what is being done to keep the issues down? I mean, with so many of them, it's, I feel like we've heard some complaints from, like, Barrington or the people near the east side of it, that there's a lot of dust from, now, can't point a finger at which lot it is, but there's so many. But there's like tire sprayers that could be put in or spraying over on very hot, dry days. So, yeah, maintenance to the gravel, like, what is currently in your plan for how you maintain the dust control?
Yeah, if, if there is any dust that arises from our operation, we would take steps to mitigate it. I think that's part of why we pride ourselves on being good corporate citizens and municipal neighbors. I think it's also worth mentioning that Enterprise constructed their millings at a very deep amount at 12 inches. And with all the vehicles going back and forth, it's a very compacted type of gravel that doesn't, that's one of the reasons why there is no dust from there is because it's such a high-quality gravel.
Okay. Yeah, not very fine, but larger and thickly packed.
Yep.
As a general statement, can we, outside of an individual petitioner, examine the code on this? Because we're going to continually get Plan and Zoning saying no because the code says that they have to. And then we're going to make whatever decisions we make, and that's not fair, so. Well, just as we, you know, kind of do water rates and everything else from the south surrounding areas, I don't think West Dundee and Hoffman really had these kind of parking establishments now. And so now that, now that they are doing it. Yeah. Make sure that we're aligned with that? But I don't know, because we have, I mean, we have direct competition within town too, that we have, like, there's a lot to, sorry, I'm saying things in three different ways. I mean, going back to, again, with Scott, I'm mainly concerned about the pressure, the safety pressure and security pressure.
Yeah, and it's difficult.
That puts on our, our police force, because.
Yeah. But it's also difficult because you're not sure how you're going to use it.
Right.
It could potentially be, you know, public parking, open to the public for parking. Could potentially be that, is what.
And they would have their own leases with us.
Yeah.
Or it could be a smaller fleet that only has 10 trucks or something, and they want a portion of just stalls.
So then, what is our enforcement if they end up signing to somebody that isn't really following and keeping a secure lot and spraying down and maintaining their, the gravel so that it doesn't get dusty and that kind of thing? If, if we're building something and that's already out, right?
So they would still have to comply with general code of the village. So if there's any sort of infraction on how they're operating that is against an existing ordinance, then, you know, the building official could cite, Fire Protection District could cite. We have enforcement mechanisms. But if there are specific concerns, you know, I would encourage them to be added to the special use because that is like the most.
Right.
Or the easier way to enforce concerns versus the other route. Because if the special use permit is ever revoked for any reason, then they couldn't continue to operate. So, that would be my suggestion.
Yeah, is there a term, like, if there's self-serve parking, that there is 24-hour survey, or?
Security.
Security present? I don't know if that's the term for it, but some sort of, you know, if Enterprise is managing it, we don't really worry about Enterprise having people fighting over their spots, but if it's just self-service parking and people fighting into each other's stuff, then I think I would require it then.
All right.
And if that could be in the special use somehow, so that whichever tenant comes in, that role would kick in for that type of business?
Yeah, I don't know what you call a day, what do you call it when there's multiple people, like, if you're buying it off the app, buying day parking passes? If it's public use versus a tenant use?
And the tenant could make a part of it, their part into public, right?
Right. So I guess if, if the operation ends up being pay-per-use versus a lease or some sort of other arrangement, pay-per-use, maybe that's what I was looking for.
Then.
Pay per month.
Then onsite 24-hour security could be required.
Can we do that? Can we put an if-then statement in the, in the ordinance?
Yeah.
I like that. Okay.
Yeah.
Lighting is all taken care of, so that's the other part of the security.
Right. And I did, I am looking at Google Maps. Two. To the west, there is no residential. It's actually the future cemetery use. It's an empty field right now. But to the northwest, there is residential. To the north is that giant pond.
Yeah, past.
Which is privately owned.
Right. But yeah, it's the idea of, like, each of these units being self-contained and having their own landscaping to shield visually a parking lot from anyone else versus putting that responsibility on everyone else. So like the residential side having to build up their own hedges. And then the cemetery hefting to build up theirs versus just each of these businesses being responsible for that line.
Yeah.
So on that one, I kind of lean towards, at least on those sides, some sort of screening and complying with, with our ordinances there. But yeah, the, going down the list, like the 24-hour parking facility, I'm not against. And the width of the driveway, I think that makes sense and we should update our code.
Yeah, agree.
The landscaping, I'd want to see on those sides. And the lighting, I'm okay with. But then the paving, I kind of want us to come up with the best-case scenario of gravel and get it into our ordinance. And come up with a plan as we're going through, like, the comprehensive and strategic plans. Do we want to say by 2050, we switch to pavement? I'm not sure if we should, just because looking at all of these gravel lots, if we switched it all to pavement, then we have just water runoff and heat radiating. Which is kind of a terrible situation, too. So just researching the two, it seems like there's a toss-up over aesthetics and dust control versus it is more environmentally friendly to have it, you know, refilling the water tables if there's an underlayment to make sure pollutants aren't going down. So yeah, it seems like gravel is a viable option if we are stuck with it, because we have so many of them. And some are locked into it and we want everyone to be competitive. But it seems like this, if there isn't a lot of dust happening, is maybe one of the better tenants. There might be some, some areas that need the dust control.
I do like the idea of avoiding the environmental impact of paving all of this land. But to your exact point, my concern is if it's not well-done, then all of those pollutants are just seeping. You know, like, the pollutants are there. This is truck parking. This is not a field of gravel. This is, you know, all, all of the.
With the long-term impact.
Yeah, I'd really want more information about that. But I, I do agree that we could postpone the, I don't know, the gravel paving.
Yeah, and the barrier underneath the gravel that I, I'm definitely not an expert on. But composite barriers, material combination of geotextile and geomembrane layers that offers drainage and impermeable protection. Making it effective for large parking lots with heavy vehicle use. So there, sounds like there are some solutions for gravel lots, and maybe you know more about it. But I don't know if this has that. But it does seem like if all of these are just introducing a lot of fuel and oils into the ground table right next to a lake, then that's a terrible situation. Like, the lake is going to be leaching from all these parking lots if something's not under them. But paving it doesn't help either, because it's going to runoff also into it. So it'd be nice to require that. Do you know from your point of view, like, how much work it would be? Like, do you have to tear up gravel periodically and redo it anyway? And that's just a layer that would go under it? And it's not too invasive? Or it would be not something that could get worked in over time without completely increasing the budget?
Yeah, we would leave the surface as is. That would act as the sub-base, and then we would pave over it. But the dollar amount, we've gotten pricing on that, and the dollar amount to do that is just exorbitant. But we also understand, you know, you guys want to see that paved one day. So we're happy to come to, you know, an agreement of how that happens.
Is it much more, or is it more or less than paving? Like, doing, if you were told you have to put an underlayment or pave it, which one's cheaper?
Just paving it would be cheaper.
Okay.
Than doing the engine.
Underlayment is existing, pretty much.
So I'm going to add it to the agenda to talk about this concept in maybe February. And get some kind of knowledgeable person to come and talk to us about it. Because I do think, you know, excellent points are being made about having it paved versus not having it paved. And, you know, I think it's difficult to make a staff recommendation on that. Because if you do pave it, then you have to have retention, and the retention will be very expensive. Or you have to eliminate some of the parking area to do the, to do the retention if you don't do it underground, which is the most expensive way to do it. But I do think it would make sense, and we've talked about this before, to have some kind of, if we are going to allow it in the code to have this kind of surfacing, to require some soil testing, like, on an annual or semi-annual basis or something like that. So that if we do find that there's issues, that we have some way to identify them and then combat them.
Remediate, yeah.
Remediate. But also, you know, he brings up a good point that of all of the surfaces, this is probably the best one.
Yeah.
Because they made an investment.
Well, Enterprise is going to want to keep their cars in decent shape.
Right. So.
I think based on that, I'm fine with the gravel. It's one of the better ones and.
Yeah. For what period of time?
I'm okay with the granting the 30.
Well, we did 10 years with the rock crushers, right? But they're, they're rock crushers, they're not.
Right.
Truck parkers. They would just, they just wanted that for extra income.
Right.
I'm, I'm, I guess, thinking that I would be more agreeable to extend theirs for a longer period, five than a ten, based on that.
There's also the ability, if it's, you know, 10 years, they can also come back and ask for an extension, like 590 Healy did. And, you know, we gave them one year, they came back, they asked for another year. So there's always that ability to renew. And if you don't, if you set it at 10 years, then if we come up with some soil testing or other compliance that we want to enforce, that gives the ability to then require that to be adhered to versus if you give away 30 years now, there's nothing for us to do.
Well, there's also.
I'm more comfortable with that.
There, there are numbers between 10 and 30 also.
Just to be able, I'm more comfortable with 10 with the understanding that we expect renewal.
Longer than 10 and shorter than 30.
Yes.
Yeah.
Split the difference, 15, whatever.
Yeah.
I just like, I like the idea of coming back so that anything we come up with in the meantime, we can put out. Like, that's what, like soil testing, things like that. Not to say that, like, you have to have it done in 10 years, more like come back and ask us in 10 years.
Well, I mean, there's, there's also, because of the infrastructure that's already there, there's already an ease of entry for this applicant, right? So I think having, you know, 10, 10 feels, feels right to me.
15, I mean, as Scott said, there are numbers in between 10 and 30. We can do 15 or something, I don't know.
And the other condition that staff put in was having ADA access for a certain percentage or number of them? Was that something that would be some of the truck parking and not just the main lot where we already have some pavement? Or, like, for ADA access, how do you handle that for whatever tenants might have handicap drivers?
Yeah, as far as autos are concerned, we, we would have that standard handicap accessible stall area near the entrance of the facility. As far as handicap accessibility, if a trucker drove his car to his truck and then got in and parked, that, that width and length obviously is well past the ADA requirement for, for length and width of a handicap stall. So we would, to answer your question, we wouldn't do anything in the parking area, but we would abide by any sort of sidewalk or auto ADA accessibility.
Yeah, like us to look into, like, if we do come up with a gravel standard for planning and zoning to measure these by in the future? Like, have that be a component of it of what is the best practice for ADA and how that integrates into?
ADA truck parking spots?
Like, ADA truckers.
Well, how is that even differentiated in our current? Because you're not asking for a variance for ADA spots.
Yeah, right, so it would need to be called a gravel.
But how is that allowed that they wouldn't have ADA spots? If it's already in our code, that a parking lot has to have a certain number per spot, how, how is that?
Per square foot.
Differentiated? Because obviously there's going to be a lot, a parking lot for this lodge, whatever you want to call it. I would imagine you are going to put ADA parking there for people that.
Yeah.
Stay, you know, use that facility. But why is it that they're not required in the truck parking also, I guess is my question.
Yeah, sir, turn you to answer that one.
It's not in our code.
It's not in our code, but what's not in our code? Because the spots aren't marked, or?
Well, the ordinance will call for the spots to be marked. So typically you have to have a certain percentage in your zoning code based on parking spots, parking lots. It's the 24/7 truck operation. It's not a traditional parking lot.
Right. But we don't have something in our code that says this is a 24. This is parking lot for trucks, so hence it doesn't have ADA. We only have parking lot. Parking lot needs ADA.
Parking lots will have to have a certain number that'll connect us up based on the number of parking spaces. That did a certain number of handicaps up, Joe looks a number.
Right. So why is it that they don't? Why is it that they don't need a variance to not do that inside of the, the truck parking? Or any of these, these companies?
The ADA codes don't address truck parking.
Yeah. It's just a pile of.
So it's a special use as a stores lot. The ADA is sort of to access.
Public.
So a building for ADA parking.
Okay.
We can look at that as part of our discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we need to maybe make a definition of, of truck parking, since we have so much of it. It might prove us to actually put that in the books, as they say.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Sounds like we need to decide a number of years.
Yes.
And I think we're, we seem in agreeance on everything else.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm okay with 10. To give room for, if we do, since we're going to review all of these, like, what does the perfect gravel lot look like? And that we're going to judge them all by, so the planning and zoning can make these decisions. But we might find some things that we want to, in 10 years, say, yeah, we actually do think this is a reasonable thing to work in. So yeah, do you like the 10, or you want more?
Well, here's part of, here's part of my reason why I'm leaning more towards 10. They don't know who their tenant is going to be. They want the special use to be transferable to the tenant if, at some point in time, you guys exit out of the, out of the property. And so that's where I'm, I'm feeling a little bit more, like, if, if, if it was an enterprise that was, like, asking for this stuff, I would feel more comfortable about doing a longer one. But because.
There's an unknown.
The, the tenants are so unknown, that's where I'm feeling a little bit more into the short. But that's just me.
Okay. I would propose 15.
I'm good with 15.
Based on what I said before, them being an apartment operation.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
Assuming that they're going to want, you know, we could say, all of us, what we would think in 10 years, but we might not, you know, be here 10 years, so. I also don't want to set them up for failure, so. Yeah, I guess I would say 15, it'd be the happy medium.
15.
15.
If I could add one.
Yeah.
Item. In a sense of trying to secure a larger tenant, a lot of those leases are 10 years plus 5, 10, even more options worth of tenancy. And a lot of them like to stay in one spot for a long time. With that 15 years, I think that that gives us a bit of a disadvantage in a sense of how we negotiate rents, how we construct that pavement while they're operating. And I think that's one of the reasons I wanted to speak on the 30-year request is just because that would avoid any overlap or issue from a tenancy perspective while we're negotiating leases if we purchase the property. So we, we want to adhere to conforming to what you guys want to see in the future while also making sure we're competitively, we're making sure we're competitive with adjacent neighbors, essentially is why.
Scott?
I just want to remind the board that the special use is for the 24/7 operation, not.
That, the one that's currently under motion.
Correct.
But we're kind of talking about.
We're, we're wrapping it off.
In general.
I understand that. I just want to clarify, because the petitioners worried about future leases. And so this, this could always be used for parking.
Well.
It's the 24/7 operation.
Absolutely, that's a good point. We're talking only about the paving being, does that change your mind, ideas or thoughts on that? We're not talking about giving you 10, 15 years for 24-hour parking or any of the other things except for the paving. So you wouldn't necessarily, you know, at the end of that 15 years, you wouldn't be, you wouldn't have to say to your clients, well, we're not getting our special use permit renewed, so you're, you're out of here. You would just have to do the work of paving a lot.
I, I think paving is the reason why I wanted to come up and speak, because it was on 7C. Because I think in talking with staff and understanding that the special use was transferable and there was no expiration, we were, have, we were good with that. And so we, I wanted to make comments specifically on the pavement item.
Yeah.
And I know we're still on 7A, but.
We're on all of them.
How is, yeah, how is it that the special use is transferable? Aren't special uses always non-transferable?
They would be transferable.
So we're adding that language in? And why? Why do we need to do that? Because you're going to sell this? Is that what you're saying?
We intend on holding it long-term, but in an event that we would like to sell, we would want that ability to be flexible with.
To tell your person you're selling to that they have the special use already.
Or it's a tenant on site that wants the property as well.
So Kelly, or, I'm sorry. Did you draft this ordinance?
We did.
Can you just clarify? 7A special use has no expiration date? Or is it a tenure?
Um, no, the tenure applies to the paving waiver.
So, so 7A has no expiration date?
7A ha, well, the, there's two versions in here. One has no expiration date, it has a transferability provision. The other version has.
Two years.
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah, you're right, I'm sorry, it was two years. But then it's also subject to the six-month limitation of any non-conforming use, discontinued use for more than six months. The special use part would not be permitted either.
Yeah. All right.
So is it the first one or the second one that has the expiration?
The second one. It's in, it's number five under other conditions, in D, section 3D, number five. It's page 87 of the package.
So if, if the board wanted to make a requirement or a condition that if, in the future, there is a recommendation on crush gravel or grindings or whatever, would it be more appropriate to put it in the special use or in the 7C waiver?
In the waiver.
Okay. I guess I'd be more comfortable extending the duration if we were able to enforce things that we came up with.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Absolutely, I agree.
Okay, so right now, A does not have an expiration period?
So if we're, if we want to address the first item on the agenda.
The one that's actually on the table right now.
The board should decide to go with the PCHC recommendation or what, what has been motioned is the staff recommendation?
Staff recommendation.
Staff recommendation. Okay. So if everybody's comfortable with that and you're ready to vote on that.
And staff's recommendation was how long?
It's the first ordinance in your packet that starts at page eighty-five.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, so staff's recommendation starts at page eighty-five, the packet, the first ordinance, and then the PCHC ordinance, recommended ordinance starts at page.
That's right. And the, and just for clarity, the only difference is that.
Conditions.
The PCHC is two years versus no expiration on the other.
And there was an EAV issue also.
Yeah. Oh, right.
So you're appealing.
Right.
Yeah.
So in the, um, staff's, staff's, uh, recommendation in the, in the conditions doesn't have the two years, so page eighty-five appears to be the PCHC. Whereas the, uh, second.
Yeah, that's where I was confused.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Is the staff one.
I, I don't, I don't know if we have a different packet, but I have it on seventy-three as the memo. And it says staff recommends approval of the special use with the following conditions. One, all parking spots must be labeled and easily identifiable.
Mm-hmm.
Two, a security camera system must be in place. Three, the condition of the grounds must be in satisfactory condition for the building inspector and first responders to access. These are the same conditions the staff in the fire protection district have been working with Powell Land on their truck sites. That is the memo for. The twenty-four hour period. Item.
I apologize, the staff recommendation starts at seventy-five. The PCHC recommendation starts at eighty-five.
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 Okay.
The last conditions is the staff.
Fewer.
So fewer conditions is the staff one, because the PTHC also, um, recommended the following, which states.
The EAV.
The applicant cannot seek an appeal of any determination of the property tax assessment applicable to any portion of the property if such appeal would reduce the equalized assess- valuation of the property.
And the special use permit expires as two years and half.
That's a good.
Yep.
That's a square Cali grammar.
Yeah.
Yes, our reason staff doesn't recommend doing that with the EAV to essentially keep property taxes higher with this versus basing it on the land value, is that what they're trying to avoid? Basing it on the income potential instead?
Yes.
But just as a. Do you know if that's a common thing that is happening at all of the others? That we're trying to avoid because of that or?
I don't think it is, I think it's something that one of our PMZ commissioners thinks we should pursue and wants to leave the window open to do it. Is my take on that.
But here's the, here's the thing, I can understand this in like brownfield, you know, in a, not in a brownfield, is it like an undeveloped field, but this is a developed property. Like this is, and on, on the gravel, that makes sense. Um. But. Does it make sense for this that because it's already built out?
Well, just, just one portion is built out, the rest is not.
Maybe. Yeah. Yeah, okay.
The rationale for the staff not recommending that condition is that we generally try to not. Get in lanes that aren't ours, so. You know, the county is responsible for assessing property values and there's mechanisms in place for people to appeal those. Um. That's not something that we generally oversee, police, manage, whatever, so.
Right.
Yeah.
If.
That makes sense.
If a property owner, whether it's a residential property owner or a commercial property owner chooses to avail themselves of what, what's legally available to them, we generally try not to stand in the way of that.
And anyways, if, if. The. If it is changed, I mean, what grounds for appeal they even have, they wouldn't really have. They'd have to say that that, that that method of figuring the tax would be invalid and if they commit, if the, you know, person that is assessing that tax has already decided that it is, I don't think they have much of a stand anyways to fight it, I would guess personally.
Yeah, I mean, it's interesting because there is a similar property that Caleb's been working on, trying to understand why they were successful in getting their valuation reduced extremely drastically. Like I can see in certain instances, reasonable reductions based on fluctuation of. Use of the property, et cetera, but I've, the one that Caleb's been working on is, is very drastic and we're, you know, we do have mechanisms to discuss with the assessor. What we see as the use and if there's, you know.
The income potential on the property.
Yes, so.
Versus the improvements.
We do have opportunities to combat if we see things skewed, skewed, but. Yeah, I kind of have to say it feels not quite right to put it in the special use, like it doesn't feel great. I don't know, it's fine.
I'm good with the staff recommendation.
Yeah, I'm okay with not including that one.
Okay, so if, if you guys, how do you guys mark your spots if it's on gravel?
We would, um, mirror the neighboring property where we'd have it in rows, a little pedestal or a sign that would say A through whatever.
Okay.
Uh, with numbers.
Yeah. Okay.
So we, but we do need an amendment on this based on the twenty-four hour security, right? On that go in this.
That goes in A.
Is the motion, the motion is with those staff recommendations already in it?
If the motion is to approve special use, which, which ordinance you want to approve? Which version is affirmed today?
Yeah.
But they're, they're discussing adding the amendment that if there is a pay per use, that there would be twenty-four seven security.
Mm-hmm.
Does that go, does that go in A?
For man security. Yeah.
Okay, so we would be amending. The motion on the table to.
The conditions.
It goes into the special use. So the, so what we're discussing is the motion on the table, which is A, which is the special use permit. And we are amending it to include twenty-four, twenty-four seven security if.
Pay per use.
It's pay per use. I have to do that right.
Somebody does.
So now I have to say it in the correct words.
And the staff recommendation.
Right.
Yes.
So.
It would just be added to, yeah.
Yeah, so I will amend my motion to approve an ordinance granting a special use permit for a twenty-four hour vehicle parking and storage facility at nine hundred Christina Drive, East Dundee. To include the staff recommended, um, version and with the addition of twenty-four seven security if the property ends up being a pay per use.
I'm amending my second.
Okay.
Catherine.
Trustee Saviano.
Yes.
Trustee Satter.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Kuncy.
Yes.
And Trustee Britton.
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Got one of them down.
Item B.
I'm, I will move to approve an ordinance granting variances from section one fifty-seven point one forty-seven and one fifty-seven point one forty-nine regarding the driveway width and screening and landscaping of off-street parking for the facility, facility located at nine hundred Christina Drive, East Dundee in the M-one manufacturing district. So.
Second. I'm sorry.
We're modifying to remove landscaping portion of that, is that where we landed?
Discussion. Where does that start, where does that ordinance start?
Why is that on this one?
Page one thirty-four.
This is my memo.
Thank you.
So this, we did talk about amending the landscaping to include, to have landscaping, I'm like so close to my migraine. Um, to have landscaping on the north side, right?
The north and.
North and west.
North and west.
Which is that, what is required generally from our ordinance, just where it neighbors up with residential, so.
Yes. So we're, we're, we would only be giving them the waiver for the south and the east sides.
Do they need a waiver for those sides?
Yes, well, they're, they're asking for it.
The screening isn't in our ordinance.
They're asking for a waiver on all four sides.
They're asking for a waiver.
And may, like two manufacturing districts next to each other, you still have to have the screening in our code, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So we're, yeah.
Is it the whole west side? Isn't there part of west that was?
If it's parking.
Wasn't part of the west not, um, residential?
Are we, are we talking about?
It's a cemetery. That's a cemetery plot, so I, that's why I was thinking the north.
Yeah.
Are we just?
The north.
This is.
I don't think we. Need to, yeah, I don't think we need to worry.
I think the north here is obviously adjacent to the quarry if we need, well, I don't think we're going to be able to see it. From the petitioner's standpoint, I, you won't see this from the right of way and it, this will never be developed. Are we just talking about western screening here?
Right. Well, the northern end is being developed on the far end of the lake, a bunch of homes that overlook the lake with your lot being the backdrop to their view.
Oh.
Like the top of the lake, that's the fill where they're going to build a bunch of homes that overlook the lake.
All right.
I'm not sure if that's, uh.
At least that was in PCH.
I think that that is the property owner's desire, although, although I'm not sure how realistic it is given what, what uses the property currently entails. But I guess it's possible, but. I don't know.
Yeah.
It might be a twenty years out kind of thing.
What is at the south side of that, uh, lake right now?
There's a house.
Pull on both.
No, no, not that little house, but there, there looks to be.
There's a docks.
A green, um.
There is a, there is some landscaping along there.
The road.
Right, exactly, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, there is some existing screening, but it's not on the property that we're talking about.
Also.
Okay, so screening exists between the lake and the trucks. I think I'm okay, Randy.
All four.
So I, I took photos also of that northern, uh, property line. This is that area. It's pretty dense in terms of brush and landscaping. In the most areas it goes over the fence, a lot of that's on our property. I think from a visual standpoint.
And that's from that road?
This is from, this is kind of toward the, toward the rear of the property.
So you're looking.
You're looking out or in?
It's like right, I took the picture like right here.
Looking towards that.
Looking this way.
Yeah, and if you have a cemetery on the west side, I just.
And all that, um, buffering and brush extends that way as well.
So you're thinking just the west side?
No, I'm thinking. All four, I'm saying. Maybe we should be fine, it's a cemetery on the west side.
Right.
But right now it's a field.
Yes.
So right now it's.
Or it, yes.
Completely visible to.
Mm-hmm.
There are some.
So if we were to just tell them on the west side they have to, what would they have to do?
Joe, do you know what, what's required if, on that west end, would that be like a ten foot? Parkway of trees?
I believe it is a type one landscape bumper near next to residential, which is either a solid curb wall.
Fence. Oh.
Or a fence on a burner, or you're allowed to do burning.
I don't like any of those options either.
Which, they only have about three feet on the other side of their fence to, or maybe it's five feet.
Right, so to the, to the west, they've got some room, but that's where the little sewer lines are.
Hmm.
Hmm.
So I don't want to.
Excavate.
Access.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm, 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 mm-hmm.
So we don't want to do the west because of the sewer lines.
Mm-hmm.
That makes sense to.
Okay.
Not do that, but the question then is just the north, like, the reason I'm saying it would make sense is just all of these gravel parks, uh, if we all had them have the screening, it would look a lot different than none of them having it. And we're trying to match how none of them have it now, but it's kind of like putting the ownership on whatever is developed around them versus following our ordinance to have some screening around the lots. That's the only reason I'm pushing a little bit in that direction.
Yeah. I feel like I would completely agree with that if it wasn't already.
A lot of brush.
You know, so I guess that's, that's a. Yes, but it's already tree, you know, so I don't know. Like the other side of that road is. Um, the other side of that access road looks like, looks like it's got trees and brush and. I totally get that then it's not, the onus isn't on the property owner, it's on the other property owner, but it exists to mitigate that.
Yeah, I wish I could drop the camera to see from the lake into it, but, uh, but yeah, maybe those trees totally cover it.
I'll just say I'm good with approving this variance as is, so I'm just throwing that out there.
Okay.
Uh, but yeah, I can move on, that one I think I'm the only holdout when I can proceed without it.
Right, and questions? So approving the waivers on all.
Well, this is the, I, this variance, yeah.
The variance on B for the landscape variance.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Catherine?
Well, it's also has the variance on the driveway width as well, these are.
Yeah.
Yeah, which we.
We, we read it in with no.
No, no, no problem. Based on the use.
Trustee Saviano.
Yes.
Trustee Satter.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Kuncy.
Yes.
And Trustee Britton.
Yes.
Item C. So this is the grand debate about the surfacing.
I will move to approve an ordinance granting a waiver of development regulations pursuant to section one fifty-seven point one nine three A regarding the surfacing of off-street parking for the facility located at nine hundred Christina Drive, East Dundee in the M-one manufacturing district.
Second.
Haversation.
Where is this memo?
Starts at one fifty-four.
Thank you.
Ten years, so this is a ten year waiver.
And we suggested going up to fifteen?
Yeah, so if you want to do that, somebody needs to make a motion to amend.
Yeah, good with fifteen.
Who made the original motion?
I just did, yeah.
You want to read?
Um. So you guys, staff did not really put any caveats other than the ten years on this, is that, am I reading that correct? So you guys, staff did not really put any caveats other than the ten years on this. Is that, am I reading that correct? Okay, um. Yeah.
What are you thinking? Let's see this little.
Uh, I guess I'm thinking, you know, he's asked for more time. He wants thirty. I, I guess I'm saying, well, I'm, I'm gonna increase it to twenty years. We don't have thirty years left on the Pal land one because we did that two years ago, so it's, you know, essentially twenty-eight. Uh, but I do want these guys, you know, to feel like we're not fighting against them to operate their business as they see fit, um, you know.
Incomparably determined.
Exactly, so.
If we're.
I guess I feel like, um, seeing as Al has the twenty-eight, that we can, that we can give them twenty and, uh.
Can we, what if we do something with the soil testing? If we, like, cause if we're gonna discuss that in February, that's something that I'd really like to see implemented.
Yeah.
I know that we don't have the op, the opportunity to necessarily do so for other applications.
How much do we put that in, what you're saying?
I would suggest amending to allow the. What is it? We're giving a waiver?
Section three has the condition, it's on waiver.
Yeah, so one condition would be that if the village adopts any soil testing requirements, that they comply after ten years or fifteen years, or how many ever years you want to give them.
No, I guess.
And then twenty years on the, on the paving.
Yeah, I like that idea.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so, say that again? If we pass an ordinance next year with new standards, we're saying they would get ten years to comply with that.
Whatever the board would suggest.
Yeah.
Because other places would not have that, the black horse door thing, so.
I mean, requiring the testing and, like, it kind of opens up whatever that leads to. If we develop a standard and there's certain contaminants, then if they find a certain percentage, then they're required to do something drastic and expensive, so. Can that all be worked into this as well? Like the testing and compliance with any new soil treatment applications or what, what would that look like in the ordinance?
Would you say?
Then, then I. I feel like it's rushed and premature. I'd like to have more of a discussion on what that could look like. In that case, that's, that's what you're concerned about, then I would say shortening it.
Right, this is, this is the thing. It's like, I'm concerned about doing twenty to thirty years.
Right.
And then not having any of that, you know. Yeah.
I think the easiest way would be to add a condition that if the village adopts regulation around, specific to vehicle truck parking on, you know, non-permeable surfaces, that they would comply within a certain amount of time, whatever you decided would be appropriate. And I would think, my suggestion would be ten years, just because that would give enough time to understand and then comply.
So if we do something like that, what if we do ten years on that? What if we just give them the twenty-eight and align it with, what are you there?
That was gonna be my suggestion. So I think that area wants to be developed at some point in the future into vertical development with paved flats. And I think we, we're willing to abide by that as well. Um, and we would just want that same amount of time.
Is that exactly what we have left on?
It's, um. Twenty-seven point five years.
Okay.
That was a day.
That's a pretty accurate.
It was twenty fifty-five, right? If I remember correctly?
It was passed in May of twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, it must be thirty.
So it's twenty fifty-two.
Twenty fifty-two.
Yeah, I, I'm very comfortable with that.
Okay, so let's say it again.
So if we, ten years, if we come up with some compliance, imagine we have ten years to comply, and then we give them twenty-eight years or twenty-seven point five, um, for the paving. To align with.
Depending on.
Can we, can we say? If the village passes an ordinance defining best practice for truck parking, we reserve the right to enforce certain aspects of that.
That feels squicky.
Can I? I wanted to differentiate here. The, the concern is environmental concerns.
Yes.
Yeah.
So independent from this zoning process, there could be an ordinance that the board adopts eventually regarding any of its, so I'm not talking about the zoning provisions.
Right.
That says anybody that's used property in a certain way on a non-permeable surface, when they discontinue the use or transfer the use, or whatever language says, has to conduct soil testing and cleanup recovery. That's not necessarily a zoning issue. That's a nuisance issue. That's a cleanup issue.
So that's its own separate entity then, and so we can just move on from that with this.
This, you know, I know lots of us duly pointed out to me that these current waiver in the ordinance says that they must comply with all laws, uh, and then the village.
That's fair.
If the village were to pass a law down to what it says, doesn't matter when year you started, it doesn't matter what it was, if you parked out, if you used gravel parking, we're gonna require you to clean it.
And I'd also.
But when they're done.
When they're done.
Not.
Or the use is discontinued for a certain amount of time.
So that makes me want to reduce the amount of time.
I'd also, on the environmental, um, item, we're running our own process on that as the contract buyer. We're doing a lot of due diligence and environmental testing. Um, we're pursuing an NFR letter from the I E P A. So we have done a lot. We've done a phase one, we've done a phase two. The site itself is considered, is a landfill, is a designated landfill. Um, so we are doing all of that testing already to make sure it's a clean property by the time we buy it. And that NFR letter will confirm that once we get it, but we're in the process of obtaining that.
See if we just align it with the other one.
Okay.
So you.
What did we, so we only have, we have Pal, we have this one, and we have the third one? Are those the only three?
We have five ninety Healy, but that's the short-term one.
All right. There's one other.
It's that one? Do you remember the duration of that one?
I also did inspect Healy and Rock Road surfaces.
Did you?
And, uh, enterprise, our nine hundred Christina surfaces meets and bounds better.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay, I will, uh, amend my motion to sunset, is that the terminology we want to use?
What are you gonna say?
Huh?
What are you gonna say? All depends.
Uh, to sunset the special use in, uh.
To sunset the waiver.
The waiver.
The waiver.
It's a waiver.
I see, sunset the waiver.
On surfacing.
Um, in the year twenty fifty.
Two.
Is that what I said?
That would have been actually section five, the upper ordinance to December second, twenty fifty.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Second amendment, thank you.
Trusty Saviano.
Yes.
Trusty Sodder.
Uh, yes.
Trusty Mahoney.
Yes.
Trusty Kuncy.
Yes.
And Trusty Britton.
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
All right. Moving on to item D.
I will move to approve an ordinance adopting the twenty twenty-five fiscal year budget.
Second.
Opening it up for conversation and questions.
Is there anything new in this that we don't know?
That we haven't talked about?
So there isn't anything new in this. Uh, the only thing I wanted to note was that we had the discussion about the local motorfield tax or gas tax, and we, there was a consensus to proceed with the two cents per gallon and allocate some of that towards, uh, the lead service lines so that we could mitigate the water and sewer rate increases. We're gonna have an ordinance on the, or a resolution next, on May down, December sixteenth, which will set the water increase at the recommended five percent. So if you recall, originally before the new water and sewer rate study, we had it at three percent. The new water and sewer rate study recommended ten percent. We're comfortable at five percent and then we'll reevaluate at the same time next year to see what it would need to be for twenty twenty-six.
Based on where the gas takes.
Right.
Based on where the gas takes comes from.
And we did talk about that.
Yeah, yeah, I'm excited because I thought we landed at seven, so this is less than that.
No, I think we didn't have five. Didn't we?
We were hovering between five and seven and the staff was gonna evaluate.
I was pushing seven.
Okay, but it's five. It's written as five.
Yes.
I just have to thank staff for the time they put into this.
Yes.
It's nice to have a balanced budget.
It's nice to have a balanced budget and a responsible budget that allocates financial resources where they're required and doesn't kick the can down the road. So I think that this achieves all of those things, so.
Well done, guys.
Much appreciated.
And ever since our budget discussion, I've been just even more proud of our village and the work you've done, so it's pretty awesome to see where we're at. And we don't have to do this for a whole nother year. Looking at Brandis.
Brandis is also very excited. We don't have to do this twice next year.
So I, I'm not hearing any other questions?
I know.
Trusty Saviano.
Yes.
Trusty Sodder.
Yes.
Trusty Mahoney.
Yes.
Trusty Kuncy.
Yes.
And Trusty Britton.
Yes.
And then finally, item E.
I will move to approve an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning January first, twenty twenty-four, and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, for the village of East Dundee, Illinois.
Second.
And can we just get a high-level overview of what, um, what we are levying?
Now I'm gonna turn this back down.
Sorry, Caleb.
I got it.
I love this dollar, this hundred-dollar bill chart.
Okay, um, so we are recommending a five percent increase over the prior year. It's about thirty-six thousand dollar increase in the regular levy. We do propose to capture the EAV property growth, um, from the Prairie Lakes TIF, and that's about thirty, or twenty-three million dollars, uh, tax base, which will bring our tax levy recommendation to nine hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred dollars. We are projecting, and it is in the budget, to, um, contribute the full budgetary amount for the police pension at one point two seven million. And the difference between what we budget and what the contribution amount is, is three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Um, and then this is a breakdown of the current property tax bill by taxing agency, and you see the sliver of red is East Dundee's portion of the property tax bill. So it's point twenty-three percent of the overall levy.
As proposed?
No, this is the current year, so what you've paid in twenty.
Got it.
Four for twenty-three's taxes.
Got it. Understood.
We did run a estimate of what we perceive to be the increase, and in my memo, I, I estimated about sixty, um, dollar increase. However, it doesn't take into account the spreading out of the, um, property taste, um, sorry, the, um, Prairie Lakes TIF. So it doesn't take into account when Kane County will spread out that tax base amongst all taxpayers.
Okay.
And we won't know what that looks like until twenty twenty-four.
This time next year.
Yes. Um, so we probably are a little bit more conservative in our projected increase to a tax bill, so it's probably somewhere between thirty and forty dollar increase for our portion of the bill.
Okay.
So when I look at.
Based on a, a house with.
A two hundred and forty thousand dollar home right now, property tax with no homestead exemption is about four hundred and fifty dollars for our portion.
Okay.
And this is offered a police pension?
Offered a police pension, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions?
None.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Catherine?
Trusty Saviano.
Yes.
Trusty Sodder.
Yes.
Trusty Mahoney.
Yes.
Trusty Kuncy.
Yes.
And Trusty Britton.
Yes.
And then heading around the room, start with Andy, uh, for reports.
No reports.
No.
Uh, no report.
Um, we've got a hullabaloo this weekend.
Many hullabaloo's.
Friday and Saturday, so hope to see people out there, um, at Dickens.
And the parade.
Yeah, dress warm. It should be freezing.
Right? Good.
So far, I just have Tricia in the parade. Was there anyone else on the board that wanted to be in a vehicle?
For fun.
If so, just let me know.
Um, can I let, I'll let you know Thursday. Can I let you know Thursday?
Okay.
Here. Yes, air cut. I'm just, I'm going around the room this way instead of back and forth. Do you, do you have anything?
No report. No report.
Attorney. Nothing Franco, nothing from the attorney. Brandis. Do you have any report?
I'm going to go further into my presentations.
All right, Joe? No report. Phil?
No report.
All right. Great, we're good. Okay, and I'll enter, do we have, we don't have executive session, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All of that stuff, they changed to all the.
Are you gonna summarize the study? Some of this was for Catherine earlier.